Good evening and welcome to the East Hampton Public Schools School Committee Meeting. The meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Public Access Cable. And we would certainly like to thank and recognize the volunteers who work to do that for us. Tonight's volunteer is Kathy. And for any of you out there who would like to be a volunteer, they are very interested in you. So please call Kathy at (413) 203-136F. And now Superintendent Follinsby, I think you have a few announcements.
I do. Would you like to ... Did you do all your announcements?
Um, did I do all my announcements? No, I did not. But I'll let you do yours first.
All right. The next school committee meetings are July 23rd, August 20th, September 10th, and 24th. Center Pepin Field Day is June 21st. Whitebrook Middle School eighth grade continuation is scheduled for the last day of school. The last day of school is Wednesday, June 26th, which is a half-day for students. The committee wishes everyone a happy and safe summer.
All right. It's almost there. Yes, I do have two announcements to make. And the first one is one that Kelly Brown, our professor, our history teacher at the high school, has asked me to announce. She would have come in this evening to announce this herself, but she's in Vermont doing a teacher training program. But on Monday, June 24th, at from 6:00 to 8:30 PM, the community is invited to a program that her history classes are doing called A Local Lens: Histories of East Hampton. And her students have been researching topics ranging from King Philip's War, mountain park, founding of East Hampton families, the Mill River Dam burst, much, much more. So it's a night where you can be, you can see our young people at work and also learn a great deal about our town of East Hampton. So once again, that's East Hampton High Auditorium on June 24th, 2013. Come early and get a good seat.
What time is this?
What time?
Six to eight thirty. Eight thirty, so any time during that period. Also, my second announcement has to do with the fact that the school committee has just completed an extensive, I think I'll say that word again, extensive evaluation process of our superintendent Nancy Follinsby. This has been a process, obviously, that she has been involved in all year, and we have worked with her through this process. And it was a learning, for me certainly, I learned a lot as we went through it. And I thank you, Superintendent, for that and for all that you brought to the evaluation process in helping us be able to carry out the areas that were important to evaluate. So I am not going to go through the whole process with you tonight, although I know you were hoping I would. But I can assure you that the evaluations of each of the members of the school committee can be found here at the office if you wish to come in and view those. They are public record and they are available to you. But I would like to at least just read a couple of paragraphs from some of the comments that grew out of the individual evaluations so that you, the public, and the community out there will realize that we, the school committee, have come to value our superintendent greatly and that we are proud to work with her and we are proud to have her be a member of our community. And we are more than aware of her commitment to East Hampton schools, to East Hampton faculty, to East Hampton administrators, and most of all, to the children of East Hampton. Superintendent Nancy Follinsby has been an excellent leader of the East Hampton schools this past year. She has modeled clarity of vision, professional behavior, and most importantly, a respect for her colleagues and her community. She has been willing to take, quote, "risk for gain" when it meant improving the education of our young people, working diligently and professionally through all the many challenges of this year. Nancy has always maintained high standards for student learning and has moved forward to serve all East Hampton students. Presentations to school committee are varied and informative. Superintendent Follinsby has made an effort to cover many facets of the East Hampton school world. She is instrumental in policy leadership. School committee members often request certain information, and Nancy responds. Nancy maintains an open door and has a gift for listening to others. The school committee encourages even more community outreach and community-driven decisions regarding our district's future. Let's see, I'm going to try to jump to the last. The school committee was unanimous in its evaluation of Nancy's standard of professionalism. She continues to display a personal and professional dedication to East Hampton schools. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, school committee members.
Correspondents?
None.
No one's writing us these days. Now, for those of you who are out there crowded into the chairs to this evening, this is the opportunity for public speak. So let's not rush.
Gifts.
Oh, we have gifts.
We do have gifts.
How could I possibly leave out gifts? We do have gifts. All right. Please.
Motion to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gifts: $80 worth of books from Mrs. Beckwith for the EHS Library; subscription to Smithsonian magazine from Jerry and Valerie Eggleston for the EHS Library; 10 cases of water, 5 cases of juice, and 20 bags of ice from Biggie's Supermarket for the eighth grade class trip to Washington, DC; and the endless work from preparing lunches every day to special event planning to whipping up cookies and lemonade at the last moment for the nighttime events that Teresa Tuthill does for Whitebrook Middle School.
Second. All those of accepting these gifts with gratitude, say aye.
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 Now is the time for public speak, if you would like to come forward and speak. Oh, good.
Well, last time I was here, I'm Nancy Dunn from East Hampton High School. Last time I was here, I was here because I had watched the school committee on TV, and I brought my kids. I watched the school committee on TV again. Last night, I am the health and physical education teacher at East Hampton High School and the team leader of this department. I also serve as a member of the East Hampton High School Council. I'm here this evening to address the issue of providing waivers to athletes for physical education. This first came to my attention at our school council meeting last month. It was the first time for all of us on the council to hear of this proposal. A conversation was started, and it will continue at next week's school council meeting. Last evening, I heard discussion that was centered on this issue. I'm here this evening to respectfully request not rushing into a policy regarding this. Adequate time needs to be given to thoroughly research and consider the viability of implementing a policy such as this in our high school. I would like to note that a majority of our athletes take well beyond the required eight physical education required credits because they want to. In fact, just today, one academically strong, well-rounded, and three-sport athlete said to me, "I don't think it should be waived because it provides me with a stress outlet from all of my academics." Last evening, I heard one school committee member say how valuable it is to hear from young people because their voice is heard. Here, I agree. I have sought feedback from my students in my current classes, many of whom are athletes. I have informed them that this will be a question on next week's final exam. And will provide them with the following in advance. Please address the following in a thoughtful, well-developed essay. The East Hampton School Committee has put forth a proposal to provide waivers to athletes for their physical education requirement. Currently, research is being conducted on the feasibility of this, and we would like input from you, the student athlete and non-athlete. Students' PE credit would be waived. Being an athlete would not give them PE credit, they simply would not receive it. They instead could take something else. Consider the following in addressing the question. What defines or constitutes a high school athlete? One sport, two sports, three sports? Should the waiver be just for students who participate in East Hampton High School athletics? Is the student who mountain bikes every day after school or who participates in a karate class four to five times a week or the local recreational basketball physical activity considered an athlete, in your opinion? What would this policy look like? How might it read? In closing, adequate time needs to be given for research and discussion in order to thoughtfully address this proposal and request from the school committee. Again, I respectfully request that you give all parties involved time to do this. Thank you in advance for your support of our physical education program.
Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else? And I think we also have a presentation. Nancy, could you introduce it for us?
I would be happy to. The school committee has asked that our guidance department at the high school give a presentation on college and career readiness and the programs that they have in place in the high school. So they've prepared a nice presentation for us this evening, and I'll let them get started. We have our two guidance counselors, Chad McGuire and Chris Sabro, here with us this evening.
Nancy, while they're getting plugged in, the gift from the Egglestones, it seems like it's a big impact relative to the monetary value, and I wonder if there's a way to publicize the opportunity to do that. I immediately thought of a magazine. I think it's a great idea. You know, you donate a magazine to the library, a subscription, and dozens of students each week might be able to take advantage of it. In terms of the dollars that you contribute, the impact that it has for people who are, you know, thinking about ways that they can help support the schools, it's just another one that hadn't occurred to me until just now. And I wondered if we could maybe even hear something about, because you don't want to just start giving subscriptions to things that they'll say, "Nobody's ever going to read that," which might be true of the one I was thinking of. But, you know, maybe we could get some more information about how to do that.
And I think that our information media specialist, Robyn Rowe, has started a number of programs where she tries to get donations for our high school library. But we certainly could have her come and give a presentation about what she's currently doing and the needs, which is what I'm thinking you're saying, Peter.
Yeah, yep, just opportunities for folks to make a difference with a small contribution.
Certainly.
You were supposed to keep going, so it didn't look like I was using any extra time.
Very good. All right. So thank you so much for having Chad and I here tonight. Just for those of you who don't know us personally or the caseload that we handle, Chad and I have both been at the high school, we're completing our third year together. I am responsible for students whose last names begin with the letter L through Z, and Chad oversees the students' letters A through K, although we also see each other's students as well. We don't feel like total ownership about our caseload, and I think that's what's great about Chad and I, like we have this really great working relationship that benefits our students. So for tonight, we've been asked to come in and talk about college and career readiness and what we're doing to strengthen that for our students at East Hampton High School. So what we're going to be doing, oops, the first couple of slides are...
It's finding it.
What's it doing?
That's it, it's finding it.
Oh, no. We can put it on this. On a thumb drive if we need to. No.
Technology issues.
It's no fun if you don't have it.
Hold on.
Do you want to still talk about library donations?
I'm not nice chap.
Sorry, I thought it was a little off on that delay.
So while we're getting this figured out, I just want to make sure that in your handouts, everyone has a list of all the colleges that our students have either applied to or have indicated that they're going to. And then you should have a colored handout that has...
The slides.
The actual slides on it. Yep, so two things from us tonight. Okay, I think we'll just get started. Yeah, and you can follow around for the most part. I did flip a couple of the slides, but it won't make a huge impact on what it is we're talking about tonight. So the first few slides are from a survey that was developed by the Massachusetts Association of School Counselors and the University of Massachusetts and the University of Suffolk. So some of the data, well, all of the data and some of the slides that we're using, I got permission to adapt from the presentation that was given at the conference. And integral to that are Rich Lapin from the University of Massachusetts and Tim Pointon from Suffolk University. They were the designers of the survey, they implemented the survey, they and their students and C Score, which is one of the research components at UMass, really took the survey apart. So what we're presenting on is data that they have provided us. Chad and I have not been able to manipulate it or do anything with it. It is the actual factual data that has come from our students. So there was a student survey, we were invited to participate. So in May of 2010, or 2012, anyone at that point in our senior class that was 18 years or older were invited to participate in the survey. And the reason for that was Masca had said at that point, "We don't need to ask for a consent from parents. They're 18 years old, they can participate." So it sped the process up. All of those students were invited to come into the library, we had the laptops set up, they went to the website, and they completed the survey on their own. So East Hampton High School was one of 17 schools across the state that participated in this. And the data showed that approximately 800 students contributed at least some useful data. 29% of the sample are ethnic minority students, 9% reported that they were not born in the United States, 20% of the sample speaks another language at home other than English, 49% of the respondents were male and 51 were female. And the schools were good sampling of urban, suburban, and rural high schools. So student sample, when the students were asked to give us or give them some information on their parents, they responded that 9% of the sample have parents who did not graduate from high school, 50% had parents who completed at least an associate's degree, 29% with a bachelor's degree, and then 21% reported that their parents have a graduate degree. The impressions of the college and career preparation process, of those 800 students, 90% responded that they were planning to attend either two or four-year college in the fall. At that time, only 74% of those 800 students reported that they completed the FAFSA, which is the Free Application for Federal Student Aid, which is the entry point for students to receive financial aid at colleges. So that's kind of like an alarming figure. 40% said that they qualified for the Abigail Adams Scholarship, which is great, that's based on their MCAS scores. And then 55% were in a school where at least 30% of the school's population received free or reduced lunch. So when we talk about this survey and why, why did Chad, myself, and Dr. Perron say, "Sure, we'll participate in a survey that's going to ask questions about the effectiveness of school guidance counselors in your school." And we did, we were like, "Yeah, absolutely. We want to know how our students feel about us. Are we doing a good job in their eyes? Are there areas where we're not doing such a good job, and how can we improve that?" So we were happy that we were asked to participate in this. So the next several slides are going to share with you the data that the students reported. So one of the first areas that our students, now, this is East Hampton High School data, this isn't the state data, but you'll see that it also compares us to all schools. So they were asked, "How would you rate your high school counselors in the following areas in terms of helping you?" So they were asked specific questions about how, Chad and I in particular, helped them think about different careers that they might pursue, find ways to pay for their post-secondary education, how helpful are we with helping them process their college applications, and then deciding what college and career training program was right for them. So you can see the colors, we've got the male, female, and then we have our school in orange, East Hampton High School, compared to the 17 other schools that participated in the survey. So Chad's going to expand upon this a little bit.
Thank you. So certainly, you know, while your attention's on the bar graph, the, those who did the survey, from UMass, wanted to note, you know, in dialogue that students in this school, meaning East Hampton High School, reported slightly higher ratings for their counselors than students in the other 17 schools. That's in with getting help to pay for their education and helping the actual application process and deciding what college or career was right for them. Young women at East Hampton High School reported higher ratings in these two areas as well, similar to students in other schools, so we were comparable in that sense. Let's see, they did give us a lower rating in assistance that they received from, let's see, gave lower ratings to the assistants they received to think about different careers they may want to pursue. And we felt like that's an area that we can address more, which is why we've been really pushing, you know, now in our third year, a comprehensive guidance program, not just at the high school, but K through 12. We think that would really help, starting at the kindergarten and elementary level, and bringing it up through the high school and the middle schools. We've also worked with, one of our speakers tonight already, Ms. Dunn, in developing a class that we will co-teach coming into 2013, 2014 school year on college and career readiness. And then we've also continued to implement in the ninth grade a career assessment piece through Career Cruising with the wellness classes. So we've recognized that that's an area that we could potentially be improving upon, and that we've attempted to try to put some measures in place to help with that.
Thanks, Chad. So our next slide, which is school counseling services received, just look at the frequency of, of meeting, students meeting with counselors. So as they sat there in May, just before they were graduating from high school, and they were asked, "Okay, when you think about how many times counselors met with you in these following areas, what would you respond?" So keeping in mind, at this point, when the students filled out the survey, they had only known Chad and I for two years. But we did also remind them that we have a school to work counselor, a career counselor, and a school adjustment counselor who had been working with them for four years. So in terms of their responses, you can see, you know, on a scale of one through six, one meaning they never met with their school counselor, you know, two meant they can remember meeting with us once, three equals twice. You can kind of get a feel for where students were feeling we were meeting with them the most and helping them through that process. Do you want to add to that?
Sure, yep. So again, kind of just bringing it back to the dialogue there, they're noting that students in the school reported meeting more frequently at East Hampton High School with their counselors to address issues revolving around financial planning for post-secondary education than what was reported by the, oop, jumping ahead on us, by the other 17 schools that were surveyed. Also, young women in the school reported meeting more often with their counselors to discuss college and career planning issues. Students in this school met as often with their counselors as other schools, so we're comparable in that sense for assistance around social, emotional development, and scheduling issues. One thing that we've, that we feel if, if, you know, in the future they decide to redo the survey with some of the upcoming classes, especially the class of 2016, which is our current freshmen, our current sophomores, and the class of 2017, the upcoming group, and noting that we have the counselor at the middle school who once worked at the high school in the transition program, and then Ms. Sabro and myself, who have been now there for three years, we know that those numbers, while slightly better than other schools, are going to increase even more because we're able to do that much more one-on-one, small group, and then with Ms. Dunn's classes and other classrooms, the actual classroom work with them. So I think, again, if resurveyed at some point, we would see these numbers increase exponentially, really, so.
Thank you. I just wanted to make one other point about this, too. When we look at financial planning, the students are like reporting that we're meeting with them about three times on financial planning. You saw in an early slide, you're going to see on a later slide, that when it comes to their knowledge about whether or not their families, their parents filled out the FAFSA, there's some incongruence here that, you know, we need to focus a little bit on, so, but we'll address that in another slide. This, to me, and small as it may be on your handouts, is probably one of the most important slides that came out. It really shows the connectiveness of what it is that we do with students. And nationally, all of the national data that is out there about connectiveness, we know that the connectiveness factor equals engagement. So students feel connected to the school, they feel engaged. If they feel engaged, there's positive student outcomes. So those are statistics that are proven and proven and proven. So in 2010, the Melinda and Bill Gates Foundation came out with a study that was called The Public Agenda. And in that public agenda, school counselors got nailed. Like, the report was, it was horrific, it was embarrassing. It really made those of us that are doing comprehensive school counseling like want to cry and like crawl under a table and hide. Because what it said was that 48% of students surveyed felt that they had absolutely no connection, that they were just another face in a school and no one knew them. And that's like, that was shocking. That really went through the school counseling, you know, world like, wow, like, why are students feeling that way? But what is so amazing is that when the class of 2012 was asked about this, 91% of them reported that the counselors made an effort to really get to know me and to treat me as an individual. So we're doing something really good at East Hampton High School, and it felt really good to be validated with this alone because we really had no idea how, what they were going to say and how they were going to respond to this. So, you know, we're doing something right in East Hampton where, you know, lots of schools clearly across the country have, have a lot of work to do. So this one, I'm very proud of. Do you want to go over this one?
Sure.
Okay.
So really, we won't hit upon this too much because we want to especially not take up too much more time and get to the class of 2013, which we're excited to talk about. But just some of the numbers that were put out there in, in the survey, that 3.3 was a number of applications on average that were processed for each graduate. 58% of the graduates were certain that they were headed to, to the right college or career training program. And while, while at first instinct, that number was kind of low to me, I kind of took a step back and, you know, think about even as an adult, sometimes we're not sure we're even in the right career as 35 myself. So I think that's perfectly natural as an 18-year-old, you know, graduating, not being 100% certain that they're getting into the exact field that they're going to end up graduating in four or five years down the road. So, you know, while seeming low at first, I think in putting it in perspective, it really wasn't. 71% of the graduates said it was unlikely that they would change their mind when entering a different college or career training program, whereas the state was at 12%. And 50% of the graduates plan to live on campus. The one that we really want to draw the attention to, and it's something that we wanted to point out, one that we're working on, two, just to kind of clarify some, the 64% of the graduates reported that they completed the FAFSA. And I think that's what Ms. Sabro was pointing out earlier, was that sometimes as students we don't really know, or as teens, they don't know what their parents are doing. So, because the FAFSA really is part of the parent, they own that process. So we're pretty confident that more than 64% actually completed it, but they just didn't realize their parents were completing it for them. But that being said, still something that could be worked on. And in doing so, we really worked with Holy Community College, they, even if you're not attending, they'll work, they'll work with students in completing the FAFSA. There's an agency locally, Valley Opportunity Council, that will work with students completing the FAFSA. MIFA holds a college goal Sunday where if you bring your information, they will do that with, with any student, complete the FAFSA on site, as well as we have annually, we do our financial aid awareness night. So I think while that number probably is higher than what the students realize, I think in the future it'll also continue to go up. So, talking about, that was Ms. Sabro's, and we'll move on.
So this was, this is just the last slide that we'll show you from the survey. And so in addition to the students being able to respond to questions, they gave the opportunity for the school principals and the school counselors to respond. So the middle school principal and the middle school counselors and the high school principal and the high school counselors were invited to respond. I don't know who responded from East Hampton High School, but based on who did, this is kind of like how we were feeling when we filled out the survey in comparison to all schools. So in terms of like us feeling like we're doing a really good job of meeting face-to-face with students and developing and delivering our guidance curriculum, when we completed the survey at the end of 2013... the survey at the end of 2012, that was the year when the transition counselor position was cut, and we were really feeling that. We're like, we don't have that connection with the ninth graders that we want to have, and that would be our 10th graders right now. But what we did do in, to answer this, because we were feeling it when we answered the survey and we talked about it afterwards, it's like, oh. So part of what we did was we brought in two guidance counselor graduate-level interns who worked for us this entire year. We had one that was from the University of Massachusetts, Boston, and the other one was from Springfield College. They were with us for the entire year, and we really gave them the goal of, the ninth grade was their caseload, they really needed to develop the classroom curriculum, they needed to meet with them. So we know, this year alone, our ninth grader saw us, Chad and I, at least four times, another counselor within our office, another two to three times. So we know, if you were to ask the ninth graders that question now, they would answer it completely different. So we kind of, like, we've got a Band-Aid on that for now. We can't always guarantee that we'll get the internship program the way that we have, but, so we're happy, we're happy. That gap is closed. So, you know, overall, we're feeling really good about the work that we do. I don't think it's in our nature to really brag about what we do, so, yeah, I know, so that's how we are. So anyways, Chad's going to conclude the presentation with the information on our graduates, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Okay. So without further ado, we're excited to present the class of 2013. We're not here tonight, but we'll speak about them anyways. So as you can see with this, with the bar chart, you know, if you're looking at, in the blue would be the class of 2012, red is class of 2013, there were a slightly higher number of students who graduated who were attending a two-year school, slightly higher number attending a four-year school, thus even more, even greater numbers that are, you know, total number this year that are college-bound. We have a small number of students, a few more percentage of students completing applications and attending certificate training programs, so that may be your Porter Chesters or your Barrens. We have a slightly higher number going to the military, and then if you look at the total number of students continuing their education or training in comparison to the class of 2012, that number was 85%, whereas in this year it's at 92%. So I think that's a pretty good sizable jump in one year. Moving forward, we wanted to kind of point out some of the schools that our students were applying to and then also being accepted to. So this, you know, there's a number of them which we can talk about, but we really decided we'd highlight the top 10 schools that our students completed applications to. If you're looking at the first four, I think it really speaks to the strength of the state university system here in Massachusetts, especially in Western Mass. But, you know, while, again, we've only pointed out 10, if you draw your attention to one of the handouts there, there are 96 schools on that list that our students completed applications to, and of those, there were 262 applicants, and that's ranging anywhere from here in Western Mass to as far away as California, Kentucky, Florida, and merry old England, actually, we had a student accepted to as well. So I think our students are really reaching out, taking that challenge, you know, looking further than just in their backyard. And in addition to that, too, oh, that was the end, I'm getting ahead of myself, you know, the majors that they're looking into as well just really speaks up to that class. Anything from the traditionals of business and sports management and early childhood to those of, let's see, we had one student going into anthropology, we had a few students accepted into some rather prestigious schools for pre-med, so, you know, it was a really diverse, yeah, very diverse group of students that really, you know, again, over the time that we've worked with them and their education through the guidance curriculum program, have really stepped up and kind of stretched their boundaries a little bit, so we're proud of that class, certainly. So that concludes our end of the presentation. If you guys have any specific questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
On the graduate comparison graph, U and D, is that undecided?
U and D would be undecided, yeah, yeah.
I have a question. I was just wondering on the, all the statistics here, do you, and maybe I missed this, this might have been here, I just didn't catch it, how many students were surveyed? How many students does it represent, all the percentages? Do you have a number?
Across the state, it was, yeah. And in our school, that is the magic question.
Yeah.
That when I was looking at the charts that we use today, I think it was just the percentages. So I want to say it was like 65 to 70 students that participated last year, but I can get you that exact number, we just have to go back into last year's data.
Oh, that's okay, I was just kind of curious about a general idea of how many students that represented.
Yeah, yeah, and again, keeping in mind they had to be 18 in order to do the survey, so.
Yep.
I think you said this, but do you have a college fair at the high school?
We are actually going to have the college fair this October. We participate in the Hampshire County College Fair Association, so we're one of nine schools that sponsor the local fair. It was supposed to be our turn last year, but we were under construction, so that wasn't going to happen. So Hopkins Academy took it last year, so we have it this year. So we'll have about 150 colleges at our school, and then parents from all of those nine participating high schools will be invited to attend that. So we do that, which is awesome. And then we promote like the Western, the NiAC-EC Fair at Western New England College in September, and then we take the busload of juniors to the National College Fair in March.
And in addition, schools will actually individually visit as well, so they'll set up appointments starting in September, and throughout the majority of the fall, will come in individually, meet with students, either one-on-one or in small group settings.
Is it safe to sort of conclude that the schools that do come for those individual visits are probably the one on the top 10 here? I mean, because they're...
We saw over 50 schools last year coming and having visits with our students. Whether they see students or not, it depends on the time of day that they schedule and whether students want to come out or not. One of the reasons why we chose period, is it three for our class that we're running in first quarter, is so that when the colleges do come in and visit, we'll have a cohort of students that we know can leave our class without any problem and go and visit with those colleges, but now they, right across the country, they come in for their visits. Yeah, yeah, it's pretty, it's exciting. Any other questions?
Well, I just wanted to thank you for all this information, and thank you for all that you do for our kids. I wanted to share, I have a child who's just finishing their sophomore year, and so of course, I'm, as a parent, very interested and anxious to get all the information I can about, well, what do we do to prepare for college, and what's the timeframe, and what do we need to know, and how do we, how do we go forward? And they had put together a wonderful pre-planning college workshop for everyone back in, I think it was like around March or what have you, which I was all excited to go to, and then there was a snow day and it was canceled. And so then I was anxious to hear about it being rescheduled, and come to find out, they couldn't pull it all together to reschedule it before the end of the year, so they tagged on to Hampshire Regionals, which was great, except that I didn't know that, and it was only on the website, so I think a lot of parents didn't know about that. So I contacted Ms. Avro, and she helped me, and she got me to attend a session that was provided for juniors about college readiness, and, which was helpful. And of course, she was willing to answer all my questions, which is great, but I just was a little bit concerned about the rest of the class, the sophomore class, and their parents who might not get that same information, and just thinking that it would be tough to have all of these individual parents trying to meet with Ms. Avro at random times. So I just, as a parent, wanted to just, I guess, emphasize how important I think it is for all those parents to have all that information, you know, at this stage, because one of the things on the list that I was very concerned about, too, is, you know, what classes should you or should you not be taking to be well-positioned for college acceptance? And even that information, sometimes I think you should know even when you're a freshman, because to know, well, how important is it to take, you know, an honors class that I might not do as well in, or an academic class that I might do better in and have a better GPA, you know, what's more important? What are the colleges looking at? And it might help in course selection early on. So, and just another thing to throw out, my daughter just finished the APUS history, was finishing the APS history class, and then a bunch of her classmates, evidently, I found out the day after, took the SAT...
Subject test.
Subject test. And I thought, well, why didn't you do that? Why, we didn't know about that, how come you didn't do that? You know, what, should you have, should you not have? I don't know. I still don't really know if she should have or if she shouldn't have, anyway. So I just wanted to advocate for really trying to reach out to parents as best we can as early along in the process as is possible, because I think a lot of parents just don't even know what questions to ask. If you've been through it once with another kid, it's different, but the first time through, it's a little scary and intimidating, and so I just wanted to throw that out there, that the more we could do to enlighten parents as early on in the process as possible would be really helpful.
That's, it's great, you know, feedback and suggestions. In response to that, I think we try to do everything we can between posting things on the websites, doing the mailings home, doing the all-call. And I know when we had to cancel that event because of the snowstorm, the all-call said, refer to the guidance website, so some people may have heard that, some people may not have, I don't know, you know, where there was some miscommunication. If there is a magic bullet out there that we can use to communicate to parents and get them to attend our programs, it would be awesome, and any suggestions that you can give us would be so appreciated, because it's so frustrating when we do put together, you know, panel discussions, we have people come in from all over, and we have 10 parents attend, for example, you know? So it's one of the reasons why we're working so hard to get into the classroom, so we know 100% of our students are getting the information, not just the 10% that might show up for an evening event. So we're really working on the classroom part, communicating that to parents, yeah, yeah, we will focus on that without a doubt, and any, seriously, any, you know, you're all parents, anything that we can do that we're not doing, we'd appreciate having some suggestions, because it's hard.
Yeah, I think the robo-calls help a lot to know, you know, that helps.
Yeah.
I've heard a lot of other parents make that same comment, that that helps for getting the information out.
Then we'll ask, you know, Dr. Perone to definitely include that as part of the scheduling when we're doing major events. Yeah, definitely.
I would, I would just like to say that I found the parent portal, the school bulletin on the parent portal, very helpful.
Yeah.
I probably went to that more than I did the website, to be honest, but that was, that's a great source for information, too, just so everybody knows.
Yeah, it is, so any parents listening out there, use the parent portal, because those daily announcements that are posted on there include all of the guidance-related information, as well as the other activities that are going on in the school, so, yeah, that's great.
And I would like to thank Chad for helping...
A pleasure.
...me get through that whole process.
A pleasure.
Do you anticipate, would you have another pre-planning college workshop?
We have one every year.
Would you have one in the fall even to help kids understand?
We're having the college fair in the fall, so planning to have 150 colleges at our school and coordinating that is a huge effort. We were considering having like a mini workshop before the fair, so if parents want to come to that at like 5:30, we're talking about hosting that, so they can come to that and then attend the fair, yeah, but we won't be having a separate.
Yeah, and part of the thing, the difficulty is that it is, the schools are volunteering their time to come out and do those events, so they're traveling out to our location to do those, so, and that was part of it with last, with the snowstorm one, was that they had already offered up their time to do that one, and then they get into their busy part of the year in reviewing applications and accepting students, so we're pulling on their heartstrings, too, to get them to volunteer their time to come out and do it, so.
But even, even information just from you guys, you know, in terms of when do you take the SATs, what's recommended, for what reason, and what do you do to prepare, how should you prepare, how much in advance should you prepare?
Like an open house, the equivalent of an open house for an elementary student or a middle school student, I think. You're trying to target the parents that maybe aren't as proactive, because you don't want the students to suffer because the parents are either inexperienced with that, they didn't attend colleges themselves, or they just sincerely aren't aware of the process and are busy themselves.
Are you referring to even at the elementary or middle school level, or?
No, it's going to be targeting, you know, trying to enroll the next duty house, or I'm saying like maybe do sort of evening events, very informal, open-house type events, but focus on guidance services rather than just academics.
Yeah.
As, just trying to find a way to target the...
Or even just getting the information, you know, not even involving other colleges or what have you, but just the knowledge that you have in terms of when do we do things, how much in advance, how do you do it, what do we start, what do you consider, what should the kids be thinking about, all that would be helpful.
Possibly move in with each family, you could take turns.
Certainly reduce my mortgage.
And my food bill. As long as I have good food and horses, I'm there.
Teacher, why not be updated with their guidance process and their college and career readiness?
All right, any other...
And all valuable suggestions, so thank you for offering them.
I was just, I was just, thank you for the data, and I assume that sort of rolling forward, we'll be able on an annual basis to look at this. Do you have a sense of how far back any of this is recoverable, or is it just going to be sort of going forward?
This was offered this one year.
Right.
And for any student that supplied the university and Masca with their email, there is a follow-up that they will be doing, but they were only funded for this.
Right, and I'm also thinking in terms of just the application, admission...
Oh, yeah.
Attendance. And I think that there is a piece between the application and attending that's important for us to see, which is admitted, because a student can be admitted and not attend, and I think ultimately, and I'm thinking now about the global audience that looks at this as one of many measures of the quality of our schools, there's a piece there that's missing that I think would, would help...
Yeah.
...clarify the good standing. So going forward, as we roll this information out on an annual basis, which is great to have, if you could include that, I think it would be really great for people to see.
And I agree, part of that is going to have to rely upon students self-reporting that. There's a program out there called Naviance, which is expensive, but a number of school districts have it, where you can actually track all that data going back numbers of years, so we don't have to just rely upon students self-reporting that they were admitted to school X, Y, and Z, and it will, it'll actually do a lot of this information for us, and accessible by a number of individuals in the district, too, so.
If we had it.
If we had it.
So what we do have is the state, the data warehouse, it has a new name to it. So Edwin, so Edwin will report back to us, but they can only report back to us on our students that have actually attended state schools, so we're missing the private school component part of that. And Mrs. Cannon does do a follow-up survey with any student that was enrolled in the Perkins program, so we're capturing snatches of it, but we don't really have...
The whole picture.
...a tool to really do the whole, you're right.
Well, I think in concert with the positive information that's coming out about the performance of the students on the advanced placement exams, even if you were, and I know it sounds like you're fully busy, and I'm making a suggestion that takes more time, but maybe an intern or someone could put together even anecdotal evidence of where students are getting in, and even if it's incomplete, even if it's only partial, I think it's going to, it's going to help, because my sense is that in the segmented marketplace that we're now competing in, I mean, this valley is full of a range of families, and I'm thinking now in terms of school choice and charter schools, and I think that there's a lot of information here that families look at that will influence decisions like those, and including that going forward is going to be hugely helpful, and I really appreciate your, your putting it together. I mean, I have a lot of individual questions, but I want to read through all of this, and then I hope we could perhaps, I guess, the one broad area that I'd like next time, and I think Deb and other folks have sort of drawn it out piecemeal, is what is that sequence? We've heard about a new course that you're going to offer, and we know about certain events that occur. I think it would be great to have us and the broader community understand, here's the process, at whatever stage it starts, when they come into high school and they meet you guys for the first time, all the way through when they finally send a deposit in, or they sign up for, you know, whatever their college or career plan is going to be, seeing that outlined would be really terrific, something that could be up, it may be in pieces already up on the website, my kids are too young for me to be worried about that, but I think it's, I think all the information that we provide to the families, they're hungry for this, and it will do us a lot of, a lot of good, so thank you.
A pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chad and Chris, and thank you for all the hard work you've done this year and the three years you've been with us. We appreciate it.
All right, I think we have some subcommittee reports now. Finance committee?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Policy review?
Yes, we do, we have three policies. Sorry, I don't have an agenda. Can I?
You may.
Okay, so, we, we met on last Tuesday, June 11th, and we discussed the three policies listed on the agenda that are being presented here for first readings. Basically, most, all of these are really just updates to our policy handbook to just update the, you know, the latest regulations, or just bringing our policies up to date, because they were old. The first one is the non-discrimination on the basis of handicap. And that was recommend, okay, so, our current policy book has the policy ACB, but we're updating it, we're asking to update it with the MAS-C policy ACE. Obviously, there's some numbering issues, differences. ACE more clearly lays out the role of the compliance coordinator, and in our district, that coordinator is the special education director. So, we, the subcommittee recommended that we bring this to the full school committee for approval, as we already comply with all the requirements of this policy.
I just have one question or comment. In the proposed ACE policy, at the very end, there's something in bold that it says, "No." That appears to me to be something that the resource that you used to, to develop this was just informational, editorial, and probably doesn't really belong in the policy. But, if you take a look at that...
The end of ACE?
At the end of ACE, as it's proposed, the, Mike, is it on page two of the two?
Yeah.
Right?
Right, I think that needs to come out. I think that was just a note that just...
Thank you.
And, and I just might mention that since Sue Colby was absent that week, she had arranged to have one of the other secretaries on the floor type up these policies using the template. So, she did a very good job, but, you know, not like Sue would do, so.
That was just an oversight. So...
Motion?
Yeah, we would need a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve. Go ahead.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 And the second one is sexual harassment. This one, let's see, this one, we have the same numbering on our policy, and so, we're just bringing our policy up to date. This one names the special ed director as coordinator of complaints, and it more clearly explains a complaint process. And also, we would need to update the name of our superintendent.
Right.
From the old one to this new one. So, does it, I think that, did you want to add anything to that one?
No, I, I think, you know, it was just updating it, and one of the regulations requires that we actually name the two, the grievance officer, and the special education director, the grievance officer.
And that's in here.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Paragraph two, in parentheses.
Yeah, that'll say stamped on, right?
Right.
Right.
A motion?
I move to accept the policy ACAB for sexual harassment.
Second?
All those in favor of accepting the reading of this policy, say aye.
Aye.
This just has a reference to Deborah Carter in here, superintendent.
Yeah.
But, we're going to check.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then the last one, JRA-R student records. This one is a new policy, we did not have this one. It's very thorough, more than any policy we had in our book, and it's just bringing our, our policy book up to date. After the meeting, we discovered that there were three policies in our book that this policy will replace. And I, did everybody get a copy of that tonight, or is that just me?
I think we all did.
Yeah, we all did.
Okay, so... Where's mine? Here it is. So, the new policy is replacing our old JO, JR-R, and JOA, which JO-R is really out of date and no longer...
You think?
... applicable. I think Nancy was going to talk about that a little bit, so I'll just hand that over to her.
Right. Only when female students marry that we, yeah. Not when male students marry.
You know, what we did discover is that those three policies were not in our index, nor were they in the MAS-C index. And so, we knew that the, the first two policies were captured in the new student records policy, and that this other one really was not appropriate. And I certainly consulted with our school's attorney, just to ensure that, you know, we could just remove that one, and we certainly thought that was a good idea.
It's a great historical document. I'm sure that Kelly Brown students will make use of this someday.
Yeah.
Move the first reading of student records policy.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Accepted.
And that's all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, policies. Oh, yes, that's all.
It's from the 19th century, not the 1980s.
And I believe a CES update.
We did have a meeting last Wednesday, and I apologize, I have not written anything up, so I will for the next meeting. The biggest thing we did was we voted on the budget, the fiscal year 2014 budget, and we discussed the executive director search. But, again, I'll write something for our next meeting.
All righty. And I don't have any other. Does anyone else have other?
I do not, but I, I will add that I didn't get my minutes typed up from our policy, last policy meeting. Get that minute.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Superintendent's report.
All right, yes, I just wanted to take a few minutes this evening to give a, a summary of what we learned from our district review that we had last week, when the state, six reviewers from the state came into our district to look at many different aspects of the district. And on the last day, Thursday afternoon, they gave us what they called their, an update on their emerging themes. This is very broad-based capturing of, of what they saw that were positives, and what were some challenges for our district. And they wanted us to be sure that we understood that this was very broad-based and very initial, and that the report will contain much more detailed information, and information on other aspects. But, what, what they did find, or what they did summarize for us were some very nice positives. The team talked about the flow of appreciation, that was their words, found in our district. When asked what they appreciated most in the district, students said it was the teachers. Teachers said it was the students, and parents said it was the teachers. The team said they found there was a generally good spirit in the district. They repeated that to me in many different conversations about how much they enjoyed being here, and, and what a good culture there was in our school district. The team praised the district's strategic plan and school improvement plans, and the alignment found in all plans, and we felt good about that, because, you know, we had spent a lot of time making sure that our plans were aligned. The team praised the district's implementation of the educator evaluation system, and our ability to get it all in place. In fact, they remarked that we, in fact, had put it into place, and districts across the state are in varying degrees of that, some not having settled their contract language on the educator evaluation system yet. And, so, they were very complimentary about that. We were given credit for aggressively going after grants, the 21st Century Learning Grants, and the MIMZI grant that funds AP courses were specifically mentioned by the team. We were told they visited 48 classrooms. They asked that we be sure to thank all the teachers who so graciously welcomed team members to their classrooms, in spite of all that is going on at this time of year, the end-of-year kinds of things that are going on. The challenges that they outlined for us were that there are still gaps in curriculum across the district, although they did recognize that some very good work was underway in addressing the gaps. Our curriculum director, Shirley Guilfeather, has done some excellent work this year in aligning our curriculum K-12 with the common core, and, and so, they were very pleased with that. But, we are not complete yet. There is more work that's going on this summer, which we told them about, that, you know, our intent is that all curriculum will be in place and aligned by September. Assessments are not in place consistently across the district, we knew that, that was clearly one of my major goals, and a goal that I asked all of my administrators to have in their school improvement plans as well. The state has recognized that, that across the state, I would say, the majority of districts are in the same status of not having assessments consistently in place across the district, and therefore, they've given all districts the whole school year of 1314 to continue to work on this. Their original schedule was for us to all have these assessments in place by September of 2013. They realized after feedback from all the districts that that wasn't realistic, so we've been given another year to, to do that. There is a need for data teams. Data teams are something that are being promoted by the state, and, and they are a wonderful tool for us to examine data in the district, and use that data to inform instruction. And they also outlined that there was more need for common planning time, for professional learning communities, for opportunities for teachers to get together around professional development initiatives, which, you know, clearly we would love to be able to do, but, you know, there, there are a number of issues that get in our way with that. But, we certainly are trying to find creative ways to give our teachers that professional learning community time. There's a lack of and inconsistencies in tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three interventions across the district. We recognize that as well. That's part of what our special education directors' analysis of programs and services helped us to see this year, and we are taking steps to address that, as, as much as funding will allow us to do that. There's a need to clarify communication protocols for district initiatives. Funding is not adequate for the school district. They talked specifically to us about funding for professional development, which was, you know, below what they believed was appropriate. A comprehensive approach is needed for reducing the numbers of students who choice out to other districts, we certainly recognize that as well. And, you know, we, they talked a bit about that, that, the relationship to that, and, and the funding issues that we have in our district. The team was careful to point out that the full report would be sent to the district in six to eight weeks, and would contain much more information than was being shared in this broad discussion of emerging themes. In the past, these district review teams often did not get the reports back to districts until nearly a year later. So, they received a lot of negative feedback about that, so they are making promises now that the report will be to us in six to eight weeks. And I believe we were able to show the district review team what is special, what is special about this district, the hard work that is being done, and how much has been accomplished in spite of the challenges that we face. And I want to thank everyone who participated in the review, and helped to show the district review team what a great school district we have. We had a number of teachers and administrators, certainly some school committee members who were available, and some city people as well. And, so, it was important, you know, for everybody to have a, a voice. I have been contacted by a member of this, the district review contingent, and what they're doing now is also seeking feedback from districts after the review, so they want to come this week again, and interview me and/or any, anyone else who participated in the review, to get an assessment about, you know, what the process was like for us. They are trying to improve the process. And I certainly could tell that, because I was here when the EQA audit occurred, I think that was six to eight years ago, am I right, Sue? And, and that was not a pleasant experience for anyone, it left a very bad taste in everyone's mouth, because it was highly critical, and, and somewhat like being given a deposition. So, I think the state and the state department have gotten feedback from that, so they really are trying to make this a, a helpful process rather than a punitive process. So, they are, to their credit, trying to get feedback on, on how it went for us.
Nancy, can I ask a question to them?
Sure.
I didn't meet many, other than the two people who interviewed us, who I, I thought were both from the greater Boston area. Were there members of the team who were from central or western Massachusetts?
No, not that I remember, no.
Because I'm, I'm curious, I mean, it, it happened to come up in the course of our conversation, there were a number of topics that came up where there were differences, sort of regional differences, and perceptions of things regionally. And I wonder how they, I, I don't know whether I'll be able to meet with this person, but I thought that was, I think that's an important, both in and of itself, and for the perception that creates. I wasn't here for the one before, but I, but there were moments when I thought, okay, I've got a group of folks out here from Boston who've come to sort of check us out, and there was some sense I had that they had some preconceived notions about this part of the state. And, and I thought individually, they were great, but it came out in, in little ways where I thought, hmm, you know? Hang around for a while, and I think you'll, you might decide you want to stay here, and, you know, you could do the same job living in East Hampton, and travel around and evaluate school districts.
Well, you know, I think that's an interesting comment, Peter, and, and I'm trying to, I remember reading their biographies, and I don't remember that, I'm sure none of them were from western Massachusetts. But, what they did take away with them, I believe, is a real sense of, of the positive feelings about education, and the positive feelings that students and parents and teachers have about each other, the culture of our district. And, so, maybe it was a, a chance for an eye-opening in, in some respects, and speaking to what you're saying.
Well, not to go too fine a point on it, I guess I just wouldn't want them to be overly surprised by that.
Mm-hmm.
Good stuff goes on out here, and, you know...
We had an opportunity to show them the good things that were happening, so that was, that was nice.
All right.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And I will let you know as soon as the report comes in. They do give us the report and ask us to, they let me review it, and I can question or, or challenge any part of the report that I don't feel is accurate, so, you know, they'll be a process before the final report is published.
Okay.
And that's it for my report.
All right, matters for action.
All right. Let's go to minutes. Motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes of May 28, 2013.
Second.
All those in favor of approval of the minutes as presented?
I just wanted to point out, in the minutes, I don't have it right here, but there was a section that, there was a section that looks like it was repetitive from its, it's discussing the information that had happened prior to the meeting. What I'm saying is, in the announcement section, it says the next school committee meetings are, this is a May 28 meeting, it says that school committees are May 28 and June 18. Concert is May 23. Half-day school is May 24, and all that was prior to. It seems as though there's a section that was, should be taken out of there for the announcements, because they were announcing things that had previously happened, just...
Maybe carried over from the last...
Right, I'm guessing.
You want, you want to wait and clear that up?
Cross it out, cross it off.
Just cross that out?
So, everything from the...
Prior to May 28.
Right, the next school committee, right, I'm sorry. So, everything from Whitebrook Middle School Spring Concert, yes, through the...
Just take it down to Memorial Day, boom, Memorial Day cross off.
Right.
Back up to...
All the way up to the...
The next school committee meetings are May 28. All right. That was May 28. Yep.
Yeah, okay, so, okay, cross that out. Round two.
Move that we accept the school committee meeting minutes of May 28 as amended.
Okay. All those, a second?
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? They are accepted. Okay. As amended.
Motion to approve the minutes of the May 28, 2013 superintendent evaluation work session.
Second. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as presented of the May 28 superintendent evaluation work session, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
Abstained.
One.
Work session, will you not?
Motion to...
Next one, next one.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the minutes of the June 4, 2013 superintendent evaluation work session, with the stipulation to hold executive session minutes until matters are resolved.
Second.
All those in favor of presenting, of accepting the... All those in favor of presenting, of accepting the June 4 superintendent evaluation work session as presented, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Two abstentions, okay?
It's all the minutes?
All the minutes. And now for the payroll warrants.
I'm using the pink slips, where the pink ones.
Yeah, there was, there was some repetition in some of the documents that were included here too. I was just reminded. That's, that's all.
Okay. Move to approve the school payroll dated June 13, 2013 in the amount of $500,931.68.
Second.
There's a motion to approve the school payroll dated June 13, 2013 in the amount of $500,931.68. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved.
Okay, move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated June 13, 2013 in the amount of $206,749.55.
Second.
It has been second, it has been moved and seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated June 13, 2013 in the amount of $206,749.55. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved.
Okay, there's a couple other things in here. I'm like.
There's a field trip.
Well, I mean, in the warrants.
Oh, and the warrants.
Sorry.
Yes.
Am I approving this payroll for the $1,968?
Yeah.
Okay. Right. Okay. Move to approve, there's just no, nothing backing it up, I don't think.
What did it say, Madonna?
It says school payroll dated June 13 for the $1,968.
I think it was a correction, so I do believe that.
I did, I did sign the warrant on the city side, so we should approve.
Can you unsign it?
Okay, so, okay, move to approve the school payroll dated June 13, 2013 in the amount of $1,968.84.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the school payroll dated 6/13/2013 in the amount of $1,968.84. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is approved.
Now, there's this other payroll issue. Is, is that something?
Looks like that was, so this must be the correction. Okay. So they have to.
Okay, so, this is a move to approve school payroll dated June 13, 2013 in amount of negative $4,782.33.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the school role, school payroll dated 6/13/2013 in the amount of negative $4,782.33. All those in favor of this approval?
Aye.
Aye, it is approved.
Is that good? Okay, that's it.
All right. Then I think we also have, someone wants to go to Barcelona.
Move to approve, move to approve the Barcelona trip from April 17 to 26, 2014.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Move to adjourn.
No, there will not be a motion to adjourn. We're, we're moving to executive session to discuss contract issues.
And at the end of that, we'll adjourn.
Here's something.
Was the executive session posted?
Yes.
Yes.
It is.
Yes, it's a continuation of what we were doing before.
It's on here, Mike.
Oh, so when it started at six, you mean?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So we retire to the executive session.
We actually finished on a timing.
Month Registry of Nurses Professional Caring Staff can provide the assistance needed to cope with growing healthcare challenges.